I would like to call to order the Valdosta Board of Education work session call meeting on August 22nd, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Invitation, Mr. Justin Crenshaw.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you so much for this brand-new school year. God, we thank you for our students and their families they represent. We pray that you would just keep them in your care, quiet your grace on our school system, and all of our faculty and staff and everyone, God. And we thank you so much for your grace and your mercy in our lives. Jesus, we thank you for your sacrifice on the cross for all of us. May we just honor you and give us wisdom to know how to proceed in every decision that we make, and we just want to honor you with that. In your name we pray. Amen.
Praise to the heavens.
Praise to the heavens, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome you to our work session call meeting, and thank you all for coming out, those of you who are in person and those via social media. May I please have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agendas for today.
Second. All in favor? May I please have a motion for the approval of the minutes for July 25th, 2023?
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the minutes of July 25th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor? Any extensions? May I please have approval, a motion for the approval of the minutes for July 26th, 2023?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the minutes of July 26th, 2023.
Second.
All in favor? Any extensions? Please review the minutes for August 8th, 2023. We'll have a presentation by Dr. Sasser on the Georgia Milestones 2022-2023 review.
Good evening, board members, Madam Chair, Superintendent Lockhart. It's great to be with you all this evening. The presentation that I'm going to share reflects the Valdosta City School District's student performance on the Georgia Milestone Assessment as well as the end-of-course exam. So, we have divided up performance based on content area, and the first one will begin with English Language Arts. So, I want to give you a little bit of background about these tests and what the indicators mean. In third, fourth, sixth, and seventh grades, students take a milestones assessment in math and English Language Arts only. In fifth and eighth grades, they take a milestones assessment in ELA, math, social studies, and science. End-of-course assessments are administered in the areas of American literature, algebra, biology, and U.S. history. Students receive a Lexile score, which in layman's terms is basically their reading level, when they receive a scale score on a Georgia Milestones end-of-grade or end-of-course assessment. The Lexile measure is based on the reading portion of the English Language Arts, or what I will refer to as ELA portion of the test. And as you can see here, the performance bands, and you should have that in front of you, so they're broken up into four what are called achievement-level descriptors. So, the beginning-level learners do not yet demonstrate proficiency. Then the next achievement-level descriptor, sorry, not yet, sorry, the next achievement-level descriptor is developing, and then, which means that they have partial proficiency on the content area mastery. The third is proficient, which again, in layman's terms, means they're on grade level. They're demonstrating on-grade level performance and proficiency for that content area, for that grade level. The distinguished learner is going beyond and demonstrates advanced proficiency. So, I wanted you to have a baseline for what we were looking at in terms of grade level, the assessment, and then what each of those achievement-level descriptors mean. So, we'll start with third grade, English Language Arts, which we know third grade is a big benchmark year for our schools K-12. And we have the largest number of beginning learners in third grade ELA as opposed to the other achievement-level descriptors. So, for each slide, what you'll see, you'll see a gold slide, which tells you what, how students scored by those achievement-level descriptors, and then a green slide to follow, which will show you the difference between 22 and 23 performance in that grade level and content area. So, you can see here, although we had well over 50% of students scoring at that beginning-level, achievement-level descriptor, between spring 22 and spring 23, each of the schools but one saw a gain in those students scoring at grade level, which is proficient, or above, which is distinguished. Fifth grade, fourth grade Language Arts, and you will see this was an area for growth for us as a district. You can see that we had 51%, again, you know, above 50% scoring at that beginning learner level, which is, they do not yet demonstrate proficiency. And that, I'm looking at above 50% being, that was the average for, of performance in fourth grade English Language Arts for Valdosta City Schools. And you can see there, many of the schools hovered right around that 50% in the beginning learner. This next slide shows the change in performance between the 22 and 23 school year in fourth grade English Language Arts. We did have some schools that made gains. We had two of our schools, while we had other schools that showed, you know, a decrease in this area. And so, as the district team works with leadership at the school level and academic coaches, we will work to develop root causes, particularly regarding fourth grade performance. And these students, of course, are not in fifth grade. Fifth grade English Language Arts, you start to see an improvement here. We saw the bulk of our students scoring at that beginning-level learner, or that developing learner, at all of our schools. And I'm looking, when I'm referring to the percentages, I'm going across the bottom with the bolded to do a summary, so I want to talk about percentages. And then again, you can see the percent change between spring 22 performance and spring 23 performance. We did have some schools that showed small gains with fifth grade Language Arts, and then, of course, you can see the schools that had some decreases there between those two years in terms of the students that were proficient, again, which means on-grade level or above. When we move into the middle school, you can see performance here, sixth grade Language Arts. And for Valdosta City School, we had 52% of students scoring at that beginning learner level, achievement-level descriptor. And with both middle schools seeing a decrease in performance for those scoring at proficient or above between 22 and 23. And then seventh grade, we start to see some increased performance at our middle schools as compared to our elementary school performance. You can see there what the average performance is for each achievement-level descriptor. And then, we did see some gains in seventh grade English Language Arts at Valdosta Middle. And then with New Bern Middle, saw a change of 3.7 in their performance. And then eighth grade really scored and fared the best, so they had the greatest, their greatest number of students scored at that developing learner, which means they demonstrate partial proficiency, and then they had 25%, and again, this is for eighth grade English Language Arts, scoring at that proficient learner. And both schools, Valdosta Middle and New Bern Middle, had a gain in their percentage of students scoring on grade level, proficient or above between the 22 and 23 school year. And then we go on into the high schools. So, for English Language Arts at the high school, American Literature and Composition is the assessment there, and you can see what the breakdown is by achievement-level descriptor performance. And Valdosta High saw a decrease of a little over 4% in student performance between the 22 and 23 school year in terms of those students scoring at proficient or above. So, I talked to you earlier about Lexile bands, and so, a student's Lexile band, that is their reading grade level. So, for instance, if a student earns a Lexile level between, in third grade, between 520 and 820, they are considered on-grade level. So, an interesting trend to me is that if you look at the performance between third grade through sixth grade, the percent below grade level in almost each of these grade levels is above 50%, with the exception of fifth grade, which is right at 49.2. Okay, so that's percent who have Lexiles, reading levels that are below grade level. But then, when you go over into seventh grade, eighth grade, and then that American Lit EOC, we see that we have more students reading at grade level or above. So, that's promising. We're going to dig into the math a little bit. Just a little reminder, math rolled out new standards this year that teachers are teaching on. Ms. Mitchell delivered professional development on those over the summer. We are in the process of developing new assessments for mathematics at the district level. I'll talk to you about that in a few minutes. So, again, math performance fared a little better in our district. You can see that for third grade mathematics at the schools, we had a bulk of students really scoring at that developing learner level, which is demonstrating partial proficiency. And we only had one school that showed a small decrease in third grade math. So, again, third grade is a big benchmark year in education, and then we had some schools in the double-digit gains. I mean, look at JL Lomax. If I'm not mistaken, I believe that they were an identified school previously, and it's evident based on some of their test results that they responded to the support provided by the state. And then fourth grade mathematics, again, greatest number of students scoring at that partial proficiency level. And again, I'm going, I'm using the percentages along the bottom for Valdosta City School performance in my references. We saw some losses with fourth grade mathematics performance between the 22 and 23 school year in terms of the percent of students scoring proficient or above, and some small gains. So, again, we know that as, you know, the district team, we will partner with the school leaders and coaches to really look at, you know, the fourth grade, the fourth grade, and then those students now in the fifth grade, and how we can support them this year. Fifth grade did not fare as well. They had the greatest percentage of students as a district scoring at that beginner learner level. And we saw, we saw, as a district, we saw a two-point loss with the percent of students scoring proficient or above, but some schools did see gains. And then in sixth grade, again, we had a percent, beginning learner, that was the greatest, we had the greatest percentage of students scoring at that proficiency level in sixth grade math. But, that's why this is important to show the gains and losses. So, while we had that many scoring in the beginning level, both middle schools saw gains in their performance on that sixth grade math assessment. And same thing for seventh grade math, they fared a little better. We had a greater percentage of students scoring at that developing learner level as a district average in both middle schools. However, we saw some decreases in the performance there between the spring 22 and spring 23 student performance in seventh grade math. And then in eighth grade math, again, greatest percentage in that developing learner category. But we did see gains in eighth grade math, an eight-point gain at Valdosta Middle and a 5.5 gain. And these are gains in terms of the percentage of students scoring at proficient, which is on-grade level or above between spring 22 and 23. Our algebra really did some of the best performance. You can see here that we have student, and we have Valdosta Middle and New Bern Middle because we have some of our eighth grade students who take the end-of-course assessment, because they take algebra early as an eighth grader. So, you can see that the percentages there and how students score. And Valdosta Middle had a slight decrease, while New Bern Middle had a 16.1 gain in terms of the percent scoring proficient and above. All right, we're going to dig into science. And so, again, science is only administered in fifth and eighth grade, and then again, with those EOCs. So, you can see the science performance here. So, a significant number of students are scoring in that beginning-level learner. We have some schools over 60, so we know, again, that that's an area that we will look to support this year. And then, this is how they fared in terms of students scoring proficient and above between 22 and 23 school year in fifth grade science. And then in eighth grade science, we actually had 63% of students scoring at the beginning learner, which is probably among the highest, if not the highest, number of any tested area scoring at beginning-level learner. However, there were gains, I know that looks abysmal, but there were gains between the 22 and 23 performance in the area of eighth grade science for those scoring at proficient or above. And then, just like algebra, we have some eighth graders that take high school physical science, so you can see the breakdown of the scores there. And I'd like to note that the percentage of students who take that high school physical science at that proficient learner level and distinguished is really on the, you know, the better side than we've seen in some other tested areas. So, while science looks not great in one aspect, it does look great in others. Just want to give that balanced perspective. And then you can see the performance here. New Bern Middle, again, they had some gains with the percent scoring at proficient or above between 22 and 23. And then biology at our high school, you can see the performance there. And then you can see how they fared between the two school years. And then social studies, my favorite, because that was a social studies teacher. So, we have eighth grade Georgia Studies, and so, again, we had the greatest percentage of students scoring at the developing level at both middle schools. Again, New Bern Middle kind of coming out strong there. And gains at both middle schools with eighth grade proficiency between the 22 and 23, or the percent of students scoring at proficient level there. And then U.S. history performance, again, with the highest percentage in that developing learner category. And then, what Valdosta High looked like in terms of those scoring proficient and above between the two school years. So, the next thing, as a, you know, we looked at these scores, and I presented the data to Dr. Lockhart, and I drafted a 30, 60, 90-day plan that I had Dr. Hudson and Dr. Lockhart look at and provide feedback. And I can discuss that with you. I've shared this with my teaching and learning department about how we're going to address some of the things that we saw. So, I'll talk you through that. So, the first thing on 30 days, and of course, I'm in the middle of this right now. I started on August 1st, is I have gathered curriculum maps and pacing guides from all the schools, particularly in the areas of math and ELA. So, math standards just rolled out this year. Teachers are teaching from the new math standards right now, and they are in the process of developing new assessments, which I'll talk about with you in a minute. We are looking at what Tier One instruction looks like and their non-negotiables. We are looking to develop an instructional framework with a common expectations, K-12, some universals. We will audit our online curriculums. Ms. Cashwell has asked that all online programs be turned into her, and I will have district, or school leaders, look at the programs they're using, and I have a little audit template for them and to tell us, okay, this is my program, so I'm going to make one up, right? So, say we have Flossies Flowers for reading, so they're going to list the program, they're going to list how much it costs, but they're also going to have to tell me, how is this impacting school, student achievement? And if it's not, we know that the CARES money is going away, but if we're investing in things that don't have a return, we need to get rid of it. And then I've also been going and visiting the building principals, just getting one-on-ones, mainly because I'm new, and I'm trying to gather data about the landscape, both informally through those one-on-one conversations and through the data. And then, we are partnering with K-12 solutions out of the University of Georgia. They used to be called Georgia Center for Assessment, and they worked with the Georgia Department of Education to create test items for the state test. They also do assessment audits. So, they are coming, they are doing an assessment audit of all of our math, first of all of our math assessments, both past and current, and then they asked me to gather a sampling of like ELA and science, since those were kind of our two hotspot areas outside of needing to make sure that our math assessments were in line, because that test will be new this year. So, they're conducting an assessment audit, and they're looking over our assessments to make sure that they are aligned with the Gmat, the state's blueprint for testing, but that they also are test items that are aligned with the level of rigor required by our standards. We, they will provide a professional development to our academic coaches on September 7th, where they will work with those coaches on assessment development. In my conversations with our directors, I've come to understand that assessment development is an area of growth at the schools, and it was for me. I was in the classroom 14 years. It took a long time to refine that practice, and that's not something they spend a lot of time on in teacher-ed programs. So, we're going to have a professional development on assessment development. We're going to audit our current assessments and the ones we're developing to make sure they align with what the state is using to assess students. The next thing that we're doing, I've reached out to Georgia Department The next thing that we're doing, I've reached out to Georgia Department of Education's, uh, School Improvement Department. We do not currently have any schools that are identified as failing schools at this time. However, I reached out to them and they do what's called a GSAPS walk. And that is the Georgia School Assessment on Performance of Systems. And they assess five systems when they do a full-out GSAPS visit, which we anticipate will happen at the end of November, early December. And those five systems that they audit or give feedback are coherent instruction, effective leadership, professional capacity, supportive learning environment, and family and community engagement. So they will come and do that. However, we have asked them first to come on September twenty-sixth and do what's called an instructional walkthrough, where they will only do the coherent instruction, um, walkthrough and observation using an observation tool and give us some, like, right now recommendations, 'cause we need right now recommendations. Um, so they will be visiting with us to do that in September. The bigger GSAPS audit involves like stakeholder interviews, parent and teacher interviews. It involves walkthroughs where they provide recommendation. But they were not able to do the full-out one for us. One of the reasons is 'cause we're not an identified school, but I, I begged them, I'm like, we need some, we need somebody to come in and that has that state rubric in mind for teaching and learning and give us some feedback. And they agreed to do it. So again, those instructional walkthroughs will be on September twenty-sixth. Finally, again, I talked about this earlier, we're working to develop some continuity around common lesson plan framework and expectations, K-12 universals. Um, I have drafted and sent to Dr. Lockhart, Dr. Terry Lockhart, and my two academic coaches in math and ELA, um, a framework for, um, evaluating our academic coaches and then some expectations for academic coaches. We really wanna build the capacity of our coaches and teach them how to support our teachers with fidelity. So, uh, that's in the works as well. And then the ninety-day plan, so once we get, um, the instructional walkthrough from the Department of Education's School Improvement Team on the twenty-sixth of September, they will make some recommendations. And then of course, after the big GSAPS audit in late November, early December, there will be further recommendations. And we will work with Ms. Kimber, our Director of Professional Learning, to develop some professional learning opportunities in response to those recommendations. We will also audit what's called professional learning communities. So in schools, teachers at the grade levels or common content areas, they get together and they plan around curriculum, assessment, and instruction. And so we are going to go and look and see what those meetings look like, um, and what's actually occurring, and then develop some expectations there. Dr. Lockhart, um, has instructed me to look into a, um, online platform to use the walkthrough tools, it's called Harris Solutions. And we will have, we will be doing walkthroughs using that co- platform with that common rubric that district principals will have access to, to inform their leadership, but particularly their instructional leadership. But it will also help us as a district begin, um, speaking a common language when it comes to teaching and learning and curriculum assessment and instruction. Because in my very, very humble observation, I've been here just a short time, this is a Cadillac of a school system. Like, let me tell you, I've been all over the place, this is a Cadillac of a school system. The only thing I see, and I'm gonna try to, I remember what you said, Mr. Gilliard, about teacher language. So I'm gonna try to use a good analogy, right? You can have the best Cadillac around, but if the tires aren't rotated, balanced, and aligned, it's not gonna run very well. And I don't think that we have a people problem here, I think we just gotta get some alignment. We gotta get our tires, our instructional tires, feel like that, rotated, aligned, and balanced. And so that's what we're gonna try to do, um, under the guidance, of course, of, uh, Dr. Lockhart and, and my team. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Sasser. Uh, members of the board, do you have any questions?
I, I just have one, looking at these numbers and they're obviously quite distressing 'cause we seem to be going down in every subject matter. But our graduation rate increases every year. Are, are we doing our kids a disservice somewhere, or are we?
I'll jump in. So, um, graduation rate, um, in and of itself is a, um, is a mystery to the layperson. What the graduation rate calculates is we are able to track where a child is if they were to leave the district for any reason. First of all, there's, there are several indicators where you have to, um, qualify a child as graduating if they just walk across the stage for Valdosta City Schools, that's fine. The, the major issue is keeping track of students that leave the school system. So a child leaves in the ninth grade, a lot of times they, they will just vanish. It really is a hunt, uh, of finding of where that child is. And if you can find out where that student went to, you're able to, um, clean that record so he d- he or she doesn't count against you. I say that to say that we have done a very thorough job of keeping track of where the children are. Keeping track of where children are and their academic performance are two totally different things. It's just that, like, if I disappear and you went out and sent a bounty hunter out to find me and you, you located me. But that is not saying that I know how to read or anything of that nature. Two different measurements were, are going on there. And, and, and I'm glad we're talking about it because again, the public needs to know graduation rate is about, you know, again, making sure we know where all of our students are. It's not that they have been academically able to check off all of the boxes to earn the diploma.
You mentioned the different programs and you gave an illustration. So are you saying that in the schools, that the schools are all using different programs?
Well, I have a very small baseline from which to draw my response, so keep that in mind. I'm trying to find out what programs are out there. And then if they're not benefiting our boys and girls, we don't need to be using them. And we sure don't need to be spending money on them. And, uh, like, we all know, well, the, the vendors can be very aggressive in trying to really infiltrate districts and schools, particularly in, in light of the CARES money we've received and, and had available to us. So I, I'm trying to answer just the question you asked. What programs are being used, are different programs being used among the schools? I should have a better answer for you, hopefully, in a month or two.
Are we going to be working toward all the schools using the same programs?
Yes, we do want to have some continuity when I talked about that balance and alignment. Uh, for instance, we have some programs like Dream Box for Math Intervention that is used at all the schools, but we wanna make sure that it's used with fidelity and not a tool for compliance, but a tool to drive instruction and meet students' needs. So there's, there's a twofold, as I, as I'm responding to Dr. Lockhart, yes, it is my understanding we would like some greater level of continuity with program use. But full disclosure, I need to get a better understanding of what is being used so we can determine what needs to be implemented and consistent across the district. And to make sure that what we're using is not a tool for compliance, but a tool for student growth and achievement.
If I can add, we want to always respect and honor, um, teacher and leader creativity, flexibility, and autonomy. However, there has to be a balance to that. There has to be standardization of practice to make sure that everybody is doing the best practice to get the desired result. So where we are right now is, um, the investigation piece. And, and Dr. Sasser's already begun, that he went to one-on-ones, we're checking it, trying to figure out what all we're using. But then we have to recommend and support some common practices from elementary school to elementary school, middle school to middle school. If a, if a student were to transfer, and they do go from one of our schools to a, another, it, we should still be speaking the same language, okay? So, so to answer your question, yes, ma'am, that is a part of the process of making sure that everybody, uh, is on the same page. And that begins tomorrow. We have a meeting, uh, with all the principals and, uh, and trying to get them to begin that journey of everybody working on the same sheet of paper.
I've been on this board a long time. And this is the first time that I have had a superintendent and staff to actually come and present to this board where we are. You cannot correct any situation during my lifetime if you don't know where you are and who you're trying to get to. What I'm hearing tonight, board and staff, is something that this board of education should have been hearing and should have been doing for years. You can have the best teachers in the world, but the guidance isn't there, I don't believe kids are gonna succeed. And our focus, since I've been here, has always been on the, the kids. And good teachers. We have good teachers and have had good, good teachers in the past. But if you don't have the vehicle to show you and be able to support you on how to get to that next level, and I wanna say this, that includes discipline. Because you can have the best program in the world, but if those kids are not disciplined in that classroom, it's not gonna get far. So I'm encouraged, and I, Dr. Sasser and Dr. Lockhart and staff, with all of you, what you've done thus far the short time that you've been here. And I feel like we can make some improvements for all of our kids if we follow the map that you are laying out tonight. And it, and it's called, one word, accountability.
Uh, I would just add, eh, because it needs to be very clear to everyone, the talent in Valdosta City Schools is definitely here. Um, you said it, Dr. Sasser mentioned it as well, this is a Cadillac of a school system. What we have to do is make sure that the proper guidance is there so that we're all focused and doing things strategically that are going to provide the greatest impact. So, and that's what we're here for.
Thank you.
Well, I tell you, we've got, we've got a good baseline, we've got a new, a new group of administrators. And I'm, I agree with Mr. Lee, I'm, I'm encouraged. I mean, we, we've known where we are, we've seen these numbers. And we're, I, I think anybody in the room would like to see more. We're happy with green, we're excited with this progress, we'd all love to see less red and more of the, was it distinguished and, uh, those, those upper two levels. So, but it sounds like, I think everybody's got that goal in mind. So I look forward to, to seeing the, the progress. I appreciate the, the plan that, that you've put in place and support the plan.
I will, I, I just have to say, uh, Dr. Sasser, she, uh, I, I don't know where she sleeps. She, she running, uh, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, asking, she putting all of this together. It normally takes five years to see sustained, strong improvement. Our goal is between two to three, hopefully two, uh, hopefully less than that. We, we know confidently that if we do the things that we already are planning to do, we're gonna see gains next year, I'm, I'm confident of that. Uh, however, we wanna see unprecedented gains. So, so, so that, no, that's what we're, we're aiming for.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sasser. Next we'll have a July financial report for Dr. Allen Hudson.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board. This time I wanna present the financials for the month of July. You should have that on your iPad, not, it's on the screen there. And we'll start with expenditures. Payroll for the month of July was a little bit more than three point two million. Operating for the month of July was a little bit more than five million. Total expenditures for the month of July was a little bit more than eight point two million. Capital projects, Guardian Bank, uh, we had revenue going in in the amount of one hundred seventy-seven thousand, three hundred fifty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. One hundred and fifty thousand of that was from SPOSS six. And then we earned twenty-seven thousand, three hundred fifty-three dollars and forty-eight cent in interest. So in our capital projects, uh, account, we have a little bit more than eight point two million. Revenue, QBE, Quality Basic Education, we received our normal amount from the state and the amount of, well, an amount of a little bit more than four point two million. Local taxes, we received three hundred forty-four thousand, three hundred seventy-five dollars and twenty-two cents. So revenue for the month of July was a little bit more than four point five million. Cash, GIP, Georgia Investment Pool, have a little bit more than twenty-four point six million there. And at First State Bank, we have a little bit more than six hundred thousand there. So total cash, a little bit more than twenty-five point two million. Debt service, revenue, we, uh, had seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventeen cents going into the revenue there for debt service. Keep in mind that seven hundred and twenty thousand of that is from SPOSS six that we moved up. And then we earned thirty-five thousand, three hundred sixty-nine dollars and seventeen cents in interest. We had an expense of one million, eight hundred twenty-five dollars. That was the interest payment for our bond payment for the high school. And that was made on, um, August first. And, or made at the end of July for August first. And so, um, in that account, we have a little bit more than seven point nine million. SPOSS five, revenue, uh, we received twenty-two thousand, one hundred sixty-four dollars and twenty-nine cent in interest. There were no expenses going out, so in SPOSS five, we have a little bit more than five billion dollars there. SPOSS six, revenue received for the month was a little bit more than a million dollars. We had expenses going out in the amount of eight hundred seventy thousand dollars. And so total, uh, in SPOSS six is a little bit more than two million dollars there. Madam Chair, board, that's your financial report for the month of July. There any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer any questions at this time.
I'm Millie Trey, I'm Dr. Allen Hudson.
And I apologize, you all do not have an attachment for that, but I wanna give you, just as a reminder, the five-year tax digest and levy history. Tonight, on behalf of Dr. Lockhart, I'm asking the board to accept the rollback rate tonight. Our, our, our military rate for twenty-twenty-two, let me start here, our military rate for twenty-twenty-two, and if you see that, it is in pink there, above that. Our military rate, current military rate is fifteen point seven eight seven. And with that military rate for twenty-two, we received a little bit more than twenty-five million. Even though we took the rollback rate for twenty-twenty-two, we still saw an increase with local revenue coming in. So tonight, on behalf of Dr. Lockhart Superintendent, I am asking the board to go with the rollback rate of fourteen point zero six eight for twenty-twenty-three. And if you look at that, that's highlighted in yellow. If the board decides to go with the rollback rate, we will still receive more in tax revenue based on that rollback rate and the amount of eight hundred forty-two thousand, we'll say eight hundred forty-two thousand dollars more if the board decides to go with that rollback rate. If the board goes with the rollback rate, we will still meet our financial obligations for twenty-twenty-four, for this fiscal year. And not only that, it will help our citizens with their property taxes. So again, on behalf of Dr. Lockhart Superintendent, I am making the recommendation to the full board that we go with the rollback rate of fourteen point zero six eight for FY twenty-three.
Sure move.
Any discussion? Um, favor? Thank you, Dr. Hudson. Facilities update from Mr. Warren Lee.
In our year to our facility director, Miss Novens.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Lockhart, and the board. The facilities committee met Friday, August eleventh at twelve-thirty, and the agenda is attached, um, to review. We had Altman and Barrett Architects join us to review- We had Altman and Barrett Architects join us to review, uh, bidding procedures and requirements. They reviewed, um, just some legalities about bidding procedures, um, mainly hard bidding requirements, which is what we usually do when we bid out projects. Um, also had a few discussions about requests for proposals, which is more so putting out, requesting companies to put together proposal describing their company and how they would be a good fit for the project. And they also just discussed doing a hybrid model between the two, which we have never used as a board. Um, so they discussed that option as well. They're gonna be putting together some more information for us to look at and some examples that they've used in other counties and school systems, uh, for, for use. And that way we can review and see if that's an option that we want to use going forward for certain projects. So we'll have more information to come on that. Item number two, we reviewed bids that were received for the Performing Arts Center exterior wall repairs. Um, this is an action item on the agenda later, so I'll go into more detail on that. We also reviewed our facilities needs list. We have an ongoing district-wide facilities needs. We discussed some projects and kind of reprioritized those, um, and put our, some of those needs ahead of others. We also reviewed, um, our lawn maintenance RFP, which we are hoping to put out soon. That's also an action item here tonight. And reviewed the VSU stadium contract for the fall, which has been sent to them for signatures, and we've received that back, so, um, that'll be in place. There were no changes on that, just wanted to review it before, uh, we move forward with that. And that was it for the agenda. Do we have any questions?
I have a, a couple of questions, not necessarily on the agenda. Can you tell, at the middle school, in that back, back there where the buses drop off, there are a couple old buses that have been there for, uh, years. Are they there for a reason, 'cause they just look rundown and trashy down there?
I do not know that answer, but I can find out.
Which middle school?
Van Dossen.
Van Dossen.
Yeah, there's a couple buses back there in that, they just, they just, yeah, well, you know, you're there.
We'll investigate.
Okay, and like, they've been there for years, eons, yes, eons, and they just look.
It's an eyesore.
It is an eyesore, yeah, 'cause I looked at one today, 'cause I have a park right next to it during pickup, and like, the door looks like it's half-opened and it's.
I'll reach out to our transportation director.
Thank you.
And, um, get some more information.
Y'all know my, my, my pet peeve is that track in the mornings at the middle school. Can we check on being a little more consistent, making sure that's locked and we've got students?
Have you noticed lately?
Uh-huh.
Okay. I'll follow up on that as well.
Yes, I mean, there was somebody there on the track yesterday morning, so that, you know, kids are going into the school and the door, the track thing's still open and there's people out there walking on the track, so.
Yes, ma'am, I'll follow up with that.
From my understanding, they, we will, we're gonna look into it, but we believe they may be athletic buses. But we'll look into it and see what's happening.
They don't ever move, I don't know. Maybe they are, but they don't here to move.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all for the agenda.
Thank you.
Ms. Nobles?
Tonight, I am requesting approval to put out our lawn service, RFP for our lawn service, move forward, put that out, um, to the public to review, and we will receive bids, usually it's out for twenty-eight days. Um, I don't have exact dates just yet, but if it is approved tonight, we'll be looking at putting it out probably sometime next week. And, um, I'll have a confirmation date on when we will receive those proposals here at the office.
Madam Chair, I believe everyone should have a copy of that. We ask everyone if they would review it, and if they have any questions tonight, uh, if they ask them, and if you move forward to approving this, so that, uh, we're gonna be a month-by-month idea with the contractor that will deal with that. So if no questions, it's coming out of committee. Madam Chair, sure move.
May I have a second, please?
Say.
All in favor? Any pauses? Okay, Ms. Nobles?
Also tonight, uh, we are asking for approval for our FY twenty-five State Capitol Outlay Project application. This is for the replacement of the heating and air at SL Mason Elementary School. This is for FY twenty-five, so these funds will not be available till FY twenty-five, but we have to apply a year in advance, so asking for approval of that application tonight. Uh, we will receive for that project, nine hundred, let me get the exact amount, nine hundred and five thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars of state funds to put towards that project, and that's what the application is for.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the FFA State Capitol Outlay Projects.
Say.
Any discussion? All in favor? No pauses? Ms. Nobles?
And last but not least, we received bids for the Performing Arts Center exterior wall repairs here at Central Office on August eighth at two P M. We only had one bidder that turned in a price for that project. It was Gideon Constructors, who is one of our contractors on the baseball softball complex currently. Their bid is in the amount of seven hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars, and we are asking for approval of that contract in that amount.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the, the bid from Gideon Constructors.
Say.
Any discussion? All in favor? No pauses?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Next we have our FFA field trip and fundraiser request on Mr. Michael Ruiz, action required.
Good evening, thank you, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Superintendent Lockhart, the state board members. We're very proud of all of our young Wildcats, but tonight, we're especially proud of our FFA chapter. And tonight with me, um, I want to introduce, I have our FFA president, Mr. Frank Sorino, if you'll sign. And also the vice president, Savannah Lynn Davis. And my awesome ag teachers are with me, Mr. Wayne, Ms. Solomon, Mr. Bowlin. And we also have support from the Georgia, uh, Department of Education, Mr. Stacy Beecham, who is our South Region Coordinator over the, over our area. And we come before you tonight because our students have qualified to attend the National Leadership Conference for the first time ever. And so we're very excited about it, so we come to you asking permission, asking for approval for them to attend the, um, National Leadership Conference. It is in Indianapolis, Indiana, on October thirtieth through November fourth. Um, the officers have provided with you an informational folder with you, everyone should have a red folder, and that has just a, a support letter from one of our, um, Advisory Council members in it, as well as the itinerary of the trip and things of that nature. But by, um, approving this trip, students will have opportunity to network, attend leadership, um, different leadership workshops, um, go in and they'll get to meet students from all across the world at this, at this event. So we're very excited about this opportunity and, um, to attend these trainings. And, um, we ask tonight for your permission to, for them to attend.
Sure move.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
If you don't mind, Madam Chair, I'd just like to say thank you to the students and to the teachers and to our support from the department, you know, just for being here, just so proud of these young people. So thank you guys for being here.
May I please have a motion to go into executive session at this time?
Madam Chair, I move we go to executive session to discuss personnel litigation.
Say.
All in favor? Thank you.
This is for executive session.
This is Ms. Ford, Executive Station. This is Ms. Ford, Executive Station.
I would like to call back to order our Valdosta Board of Education work session called meeting. Personnel, and this is action required. Resignations. One sped parapro at Salas Mahone. Is that Salas Mahone, is she on?
Uh, yes ma'am.
Okay, Salas Mahone. One sped parapro at Pineville Elementary School. New hires. One sped parapro at Salas Mahone. One ISS parapro at Valdosta Middle School. One music parapro at SL Mason. One school nutrition assistant at SL Mason. One school nutrition assistant at Valdosta High School. Re-hires. Two bus monitors at Transportation. One full-time school nutrition assistant at Pineville Elementary School. Now please have a motion.
We accept the superintendent's recommendation.
Okay. All in favor? Or opposed? Any board member comments? Reminders for board members. The Wildcats will play at Cook County on August 25th. Kickoff is at 7:30 PM. The Teaching and Learning Committee will meet on September 1st at 12:30 PM in the Valdosta Board of Education boardroom. Whole board training dates for 2023-2024 are October 20th, 2023, a six-hour training. And March 29th, 2024, a six-hour training. May I please have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Thanks.
All in favor? We are adjourned.
Y'all don't wanna go.